Oh, that's on consent.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Let's call this meeting, the regular meeting of Ketchikan City Council, please call the roll.
Kuz?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Harris?
Right.
Isom? Piper? Seaberton?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The first thing under Communications, first thing we do is we have a resolution tonight for Choose Respect. I'd like to read it. Is there somebody here to...
Susan?
Susan? Great. Whereas Choose Respect marches and rallies raise awareness of Alaska's academic, domestic violence, and sexual assault, whereas since 2009, these marches have helped give a voice to thousands of Alaskians who are affected by this blight of Alaska families. Whereas interpersonal violence, assaults are our collective humanity and de mean devastates innocent victims, hurts families and friends, even diminishes the lives of the predators. And whereas not only women, but men living in Alaska experience domestic violence emphasizing that the problem of domestic violence across all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, whereas together, Alaskians can offer compassion to victims and survivors and foster a dialogue that allows fellow Alaskians to speak out. And whereas supporting and participating in Choose Respect March promotes change towards breaking the cycle of violence against future generations, now thereby be resolved that I, the Williams III Mayor of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim March 31, 2016, as Choose Respect Day and urge all residents in the community of Ketchikan to be an agent of change and break the cycle of violence against future generations. Susan, may I come up? Susan Nigell?
Hi, thank you. Yes, and I'm on the board of the First City Homeless Services, and we're hosting this event along with Wish. So, the state had it against just domestic violence, and we included all the people that need to be recognized that they need some assistance and help. So, we hope you will come, and it will be listed on our Facebook page of the First City Homeless Services. So, if you need some more information, and I do have some... That's good, you put in your employee room, and then also just some more information. I'll just give it to you, so you have it. Pass it on.
I already got one of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Pretty much what the mayor said, but it just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hope you will all come. Thank you.
Now, Sue, I have you down on person to be heard. Did you want to say something else?
Yes.
Great, start us off.
(laughing).
I was hoping.
Yeah. Don't want to forget this. So, anyways, good evening, city council members, mayor, and our community. My name is Susan Peters, 5067 North Tongas Highway, and I am the owner and operator of Scanlon Gallery and Artic Spirit Gallery downtown. I want to speak on new business item two and three. I am a member of the committee that was formed last spring to address the issue again of hawking and barking in the downtown area. And I know everybody has heard me here and before, and many others. A new ordinance has been established to address the ongoing problem during our visitor season. Excuse me. I recommend you support this for as a good first step to control inappropriate solicitations to people harmlessly walking the streets of our downtown. Along with this, enforcement is a must, so I hope, and it is being addressed. Also, fines are being addressed, so that's a good thing. I think working together with the borough to prevent any new conditional use permits to be given to vendors or agents outside structures within the defined area in downtown. And so, I know all of you know that, but for the public, a designation has been set, so, and I think that's a good thing. I think it's important we protect this vital industry to our community and provide a comfortable environment for our community and our visitors so they want to come downtown. I think all the time the city council has done on this, the city attorney and the staff working on this issue. So, I think it's a great first step, and I hope you support it also.
Any questions for Sue? Thank you, Sue.
Okay, thank you.
I have nobody else signed up. Would somebody else like to talk other than Terrence? Come on up.
I'll be very brief. I just wanted to, I know you have these in your emails, but I'd like to formally invite you to the Prime for Life events that we have next week. Prime for Life training provides support, solutions, and hope for individuals and families struggling with substance abuse and addiction. If a kid gets a minor consuming or a DUI, and they go to youth court, they might take Prime for Life classes. If a person fails a drug test at certain businesses, they, rather than being fired, some businesses will send them to Prime for Life training. And actually, Jan Lee is a Prime for Life trainer, so she can tell you a lot more than I can. But anyway, we're bringing up Michelle Ellison from the Prevention Research Institute to Ketchikan this week, this next week, and she will have a meet and greet for law enforcement, legal professionals, social workers, and stuff at the Ted Fairies Civic Center from 5:30 to 7:30. And then another one for medical professionals on Wednesday. But the thing that I'd love for all of you to come to is that we're going to have a community's talk, town hall meeting on youth substance use on Tuesday night at the Ted Fairies Civic Center from, we have it booked from 6:00 to 9:00. I don't know if we'll need to go that long. This will be everyone's opportunity to share your ideas and learn what we can do to prevent underage drinking and substance abuse in Ketchikan. So, it's not just going to be open-mic night where people get to complain and point fingers. There's going to be information provided, there'll be speakers, and then we'll break into facilitated work groups that tackle different substances like marijuana, meth, heroin, and opioid use, and underage drinking. And then, and then we'll come back as a group and kind of see what we've come up with as next steps that the community can do to address these issues. So, it should be really beneficial, and it's not just a speech you have to go listen to. So, any questions at all?
Any questions? Thanks, Terrence.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody else here who wants to address the council tonight? See you then, we'll move into our agenda. Thank you. That brings us down to consent agenda. I'd like to add, if everybody's accommodating, seven, five, six, seven, and eight, and nine. No, no, just sign through eight, excuse me. And B four.
Five, six, seven, eight.
No, nine. Five, six, seven, eight, and B four. All right, do we have a motion to consent?
Your Honor, I move to consent.
Move in second. Madam, can you read items?
Please.
Hold on one moment. Why don't we add 6A12, since we've got to defeat that so we can talk about the other motions, and then we don't have to make a separate motion for it?
Well, the motion, there, I think there is a motion on the table already.
Oh.
Because a motion was deferred to approve.
We got to do it.
But don't we have to just defeat it?
Well, if you do, under consent agenda, you're approving the reforms.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Okay, never mind. Gotcha. Cancel that, go ahead and read items.
Good try.
Yeah.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of March 3, 2016, a budget transfer for the Civic Center exit sign replacement, and a budget transfer for city hall exit sign replacement, voluntary recruitment and retention pilot program grant application, revised memoranda of agreement between the United States Coast Guard and the Ketchikan Fire Department regarding fire protection and emergency services, the Coast Guard Base Ketchikan and U.S. Coast Guard Cutter Anthony Petit, affiliation agreement between the University of Alaska Fairbanks Community and Technical College and the Ketchikan Fire Department, in-house paramedic training program, budget transfers for the fire department moving expenses and fireboat repairs, award of contract number 1604, utility tree pruning with Three Dog Construction Incorporated, a backlog prevention granting aid Totem Bar, exempting the procurement of annual co-location services for the telecommunications division from the competitive bid rent quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with greenhouse data, a budget transfer, the wastewater division treatment plant building B underground fuel tank, and offer of employment for the streets division supervisor, amendment number three to contract number 1442, design of hole-in-wall harbor reconstruction with P&amp;D Engineers Incorporated, a reimbursement agreement for additional medical center construction work, Ketchikan Medical Center expansion, and a budget transfer declaration of public emergency telecommunications division central office hall-on-fire suppression system replacement with Yukon Fire Protection.
Anybody have any questions before we vote? Bob?
Yeah. In regards, Your Honor...
Go ahead.
In regards to two and three, we're using tritium signs, and they have a radioactive isotope in order to make them glow, and so, and they're about a 10 to 12-year product, and then you have to dispose of them in whatever the appropriate manner is. And I'd like to see us look into, I know there's some photo-illuminating signs out there now, and if they meet the present codes for being used in public, billion, I think they have a 25-year life maybe, and I don't think we have the disposal issue in regards to those. So, looking forward, if we could get rid of something like that, I think would be to our benefit.
Thanks, Bob.
One other, if I may.
Go ahead.
Item four is our volunteer recruitment retention pilot program. And Chief, I just wondered what pilot means. Does that mean like we're going to get funding for a couple of years, and then we're not going to get any funding?
Essentially, yes. So, the answer to that is, this is a new program that they're just starting and piloting, and so they have funding for two years of the program, up to $20,000 that we could get reimbursed for recruitment and retention efforts. And there's no ongoing commitment of funds from us, it just helps us out for that two years and see what we can do with it. We'll help them evaluate the materials that they're going to provide, and they'll also provide some training along with that assistance.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, if it's true, if it turns out to be beneficial...
If it turns out to be beneficial, then they may extend the program and open it up to other applicants for grants. Initially, they're looking, I believe it was 10 agencies will be selected to participate in the program.
Okay, yeah, I just wondered if, how this, how this was supposed to run, so...
Right, so it's a temporary thing. We're helping to evaluate what this program is by participating, and that way they can make a determination if it's successful, and if they want to continue it on a further basis in other areas.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes five and a half. That brings us down to unfinished business, 6A1, the old ordinance, if we could get a thing on there to vote it down. Okay, unfinished. Six, okay. And this is already... The motion's on the floor, seven. Oh, okay. All right. This is the old motion that we had originally that we delayed, and then we've come up with the new ordinances as we are in the under new business. So, if we could vote this one away, then we can talk about the new ones.
Okay.
All right.
Is this on the number one? Okay.
Yeah, so we'll be dealing this again with seven, eight, two, and three. Do we, anybody have anything to say?
Correct answer is no.
Correct answer is no. Thank you, Dick. Call the roll.
Kuz?
No.
Gage?
No.
Harris?
No.
Seaberton?
No.
And Zingy?
No.
Thank you, everybody. That's defeated, and that brings us down to boards and appointment. We have one appointment tonight, and that is Clayton Moore to the parts and harbor advisory board meeting, parts and harbor board. Do we have any objections? Hearing none, it's so done. That brings us down to 7A1, Resolution 162619, issuance of general obligation bond, $2 million for harbor facilities improvement, as ratified by voters in June 26. So, this has already been, we're not going out for a new bond, this is bonding stuff we already did. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
This is, I'll make sure I got the right one here. This is the one going out for municipal bond bank.
It's issuing the bonds for the harbor facility.
Issuing.
I want to make sure I have the right one here, because it doesn't, 162619?
Yes.
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 That's initially, oh, yeah.
Yeah, hit the, yeah, hit that.
There we go. I got it. Make sure I have the right one. Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approved Resolution 162619, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city in a principal amount not to exceed $2 million to finance the cost of certain improvements to the harbor facilities of the city, as authorized in ordinance number 12-1697, and ratified by the city voters as special election held on June 26, 2012, authorizing tax levies to pay for the principles therefore thereof and interests thereon, authorizing the sales of the bonds to the Alaska Municipal Bond Bank on the terms and conditions provided in the resolution and established effective date.
Second.
Move in second. Anybody have anything on this?
Dave, I have a quick question. Now, the rates is going up in September or something of 2016.
Correct.
Is that the rate that's going to pay for us to selling these bonds?
Mayor Williams, that is correct.
Okay, that was what we anticipated in our budget.
Right, it is in our budget. When the, when we took the project into the voters' consideration, the council developed a financing plan that would require rates to be increased 7% for...
Yeah, I remember that.
...$2 million for the debt issue. The rate increase for 2016 is in the budget, and that's the fourth rate increase that's been approved by the council. We may be looking at one more.
Okay, how much is left in that bond?
$2 million.
There's $2 million more. And what do we, what do we plan on that one on?
We are going to do hole-in-the-wall, which is already in construction, and the second project is about Harbor North Ramp 3.
And that's what the last $2 million's for?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, if we go ahead and do that, that's another rate increase for the following year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Bob. All right, call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Gage?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes five and a half. Ordinance, excuse me, the next one is 7A B, ordinance 161814, creating a new chapter 9.54 entitled Off Premises Commercial Solicitation Restrictions, first reading. Do we have a motion, please?
No, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council through in first reading, ordinance number 161814, creating a new chapter 9.54 entitled Off Premises Commercial Solicitation Restrictions, and established effective date.
Second.
Thanks, Dick. I've been a part of the committee here and working on this since the last time we talked about this. This is a new ordinance, and we think that it will keep people inside the doorways, not hawking from the city sidewalks, or hopefully not using anything like speakers or anything else to try to hawk along the sidewalk there. The main issue, last time, we were, some of the guys using conditional use permits, some of the independent tour guys along Front Street were concerned, and under that old ordinance, it would have pretty much abolished them. What we've done is, I'm sort of grandfathered the ones down there along Front Street, Nils' and McDonald's, and what we're going to in the second thing, this Resolution 162621, is a resolution that we're going to pass and move on to the planning commission. I'll be talking to them next Tuesday, where we'd like to, and this is just in the downtown area, encourage them to not have conditional use permits into doorways in the downtown area, and if they do, somebody does want to do some sales, they have to have an enclosed structure, so that would put them into, you know, Hazelquist Parking Lot, Redmond, it would keep them into an area where they're enclosed instead of a doorway, like we're trying to enforce with everybody else. So, it's our, we put it together, it's our best shot. Everybody seems to be on board to go ahead and move forward on this and see how it works. As you can tell, we don't have a giant crowd here like the last time coming at us, but we still have a second reading. But this does not, I think this will get us in the right direction. We'll see what happens after the year, but I'm comfortable with moving ahead. Any other comments?
I agree with everything you said. It took this committee a long time and a whole bunch of different conversations to get where it is now, and we have a second reading, which will fill this room. I'm pretty sure on that.
I'm hoping not.
We hope not.
Anybody else?
Just based on what you guys did in the past year, the previous year before you guys actually started implementing this, it was horrible going downtown. I didn't even enjoy going downtown, so I'm really happy with what you had here.
So, we'll see how it works.
Yeah.
All right, call the roll.
Harris?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy? Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
That passes five and a half. Brings us down to 7A3, Resolution 162621, objecting to the issuance or renewal of certain conditional use permits. And this is like I was saying, this is a thing we'd like to approve and pass on to the planning commission. This does nothing but show that the council, this is our position, we, you know, they can vote against us all they want or whatever, but I think working together, I've been, we've been meeting, Dave and myself, and been meeting with the planning commission, or the planning department guys out there, and they're really familiar with what our objective is and working with us, so we can pass this along, and I'll go talk to them, and we'll see where we go. Any questions?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, do we have a motion? I apologize.
Yeah, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Dick.
I move the city council approve Resolution number 162621, objecting to the issuance or renewal of certain conditional use permit by the city, by the Ketchikan Gateway Borough and established effective date.
Second.
Move in second. Anybody else? Dick?
I've just got a question. It talks about renewal of such permits, we aren't going to object to maybe, but then it says doesn't preclude, and I guess what I'm fishing for is, are we comfortable that, say that permit changes owners, and we're not comfortable with it? What is, do we have an option to deal with?
Me and David talked about it, go ahead.
That's the whole, the whole idea behind that, Councilmember Kuz, is that what we're saying here is that if things change, this doesn't lock council into not objecting to something in the future, okay? Whether it be, whether it be a change in ownership or what may have you, council would have the prerogative to object to it.
All right, anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes five and a half. That brings us down to 7A4, liquor license renewal for city saloon beverage dispensary. We had it lay on the table, does that...
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Pursuant to the Ketchikan Municipal Code 5.20.050B, I move the city council protest the renewal of the beverage dispensary for city saloon license, direct the city clerk to schedule a public hearing on the protest at 7:00 p.m. on April 7, 2016, in the council chambers, and notify the licensed applicant in accordance with the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section 2.20.050B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second. Bob?
Yeah, we have three options here. You know, this is something that we've been, that's been before us before, and I'm not sure, and I had to call in to the ABC Board to find out, because what we're going to do is going to protest, and it's still up to the ABC Board what they're going to do with it. All we do is file a protest. And I asked what weight either of these motions had, and since this is the one by ordinance that they recognize, I felt it was the best effort to go through that, that manner.
Dick?
Yeah, have we, have the applicants made any contact to anybody saying they're going to pay?
I have not heard from them, but I understand that property, or the Borough Revenue Department has not heard from them either.
Didn't we have this the last time?
Last year was their package liquor store license?
But it's still liquor license, yeah.
Right, this year is their...
I got no problem.
...ferrous dispensary.
Yeah, I called the borough today, and there still hasn't been any payment made or anything. Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes five and a half. That brings us now down to 7A9, budget transfer change order seven to contract 1338A, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center expansion project, Leighton Dawson, joint venture constructors. Do we have a motion? That's mine, right? Yeah, okay. We're getting there.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve change order number seven to contract number 13-38A, construction services to Ketchikan Medical Center expansion project between the city of Ketchikan and Leighton Dawson, joint venture construction, in amount of $284,409, authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of $8,143 from the Ketchikan Medical Center expansion transition phase and alternate master budget Phase Two, capital account to the Ketchikan Medical Center expansion project capital account, approved funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center expansion project capital account, and direct the city manager to execute the change order on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Move in second. May I add anything, Bob?
Well, I think it's important to note that we're making a budget transfer out of the Phase Two monies, which means that part of the contingency has been depleted. And so, I don't know where we're at on the total project, but I don't think this is probably going to be the last one of these that we see. So, I don't know how we manage the extra expenditures going forward, but I think that it's very important that we keep a close handle and be kept aware of what those changes may be.
Dick?
Yeah, Lou, sometimes this, this whole thing of reimbursement in this pot and this pot gets kind of messy, it seems like. And I don't know whether anybody tonight could give us a brief overview of how it stands, but it would be, I think we need a piece of paper that says, here's what's happened to those two reserve funds. I'm going to call two, because I think the contractor had one, we had one, we're being reimbursed for something, and we're reimbursing somebody for something, and it's kind of, does that make sense?
Dave, do you have an answer?
Well, if what you're asking for, Councilmember Kuz, is a, basically a spreadsheet to show where the different, what has been taken out of what's remaining in the different contingency funds, and both in Phase One and Phase Two, we can provide that. Because, because in this particular case, this, you know, in, in this budget transfer, it's different than a reimbursable agreement. It's apples and oranges.
Yes, I know there's two different things going on.
Exactly.
If you could get that to us by the next meeting?
We can do that, Your Honor.
Bob?
This is all still within the realm of the money that we got through grants and bonds, and we just did some value engineering. We had this pot that we had sitting that would call Phase Two or Three or Four.
That is correct.
It's still within the budget of the hospital, and I think that's important to understand. And the fact is, by doing this, we don't have to go out and look at the 1% reserve, the hospital sales tax. the hospital sales tax and take money out of the.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Call the roll.
Gage? Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Kuss?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Is that everybody? Five, nothing to pass. That brings us down to seven eight eleven budget transfer. Spruce Mill Way Repair Project Decorative Inlay Crosswalks.
No, we gotta do ten.
Better do ten.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we do two?
Yes, we did. All right. That means we're intense. Amendment to Agreement for City Funded Medical Center Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Acquisition Phase One Ketchikan Medical Center Project. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council approve the amendment to contract number fifteen thirty-one between the City of Ketchikan and Peace House for the acquisition of city-funded medical center furniture fixtures and equipment and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the City Council.
Second.
Rooted in second. Bob, do you want to add anything?
Well, what this is, is just finishing up. The city purchases stuff outright and Peace House is obligated to reimburse us for it. So that's kind of where we're going with this project.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
All right. That passes five, nothing. Brings us down to eleven, the budget transfers for the Spruce Mill Way Repair Project Decorative Inlay Crosswalks. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion so we can discuss it.
Yeah. I thought we should talk about it.
I move the City Council authorize the budget transfer of ten thousand from appropriated reserves of the Public Works Sales Tax Fund to the Street Division two sixteen button Spruce Mill Way Pavement Repair Capital Account to facilitate the installation of decorative inlay crosswalk as detailed in the Senior Project Engineer's Memorandum dated March ninth, two thousand and sixteen.
Rooted in second. Bob?
Well, I think we should have Public Works come up and explain what we're doing here.
Kara Jurzak, Senior Project Engineer. So what it is, is we're going to pave new asphalt down there. And then after the paving, this contractor would come up and they have a template that's a stamp. They heat a special oscillating radiating heater with reheat the asphalt. They press the stamp down in and then, and then they compact that down in the asphalt. And then they come through with a thermoplastic that matches the same template as the stamp. It lays in the grooves and they heat that in. So that is the same material as our current crosswalk striping. It's just inlaid into the asphalt as opposed to sitting on top.
And what was the impetus, I mean, got us going in this direction, other than Carl's excited about it? And I mean that in the nicest way.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Oh, well, I talked to Carl about, I mean, what's the emphasis for doing, getting to this? Are we looking at doing this throughout the city as we go or, I mean, out to downtown or?
That's an option that we have moving forward. I think, so the current intersection that we're looking at is very popular during the summer, right? Lots of tourists are there, all the cruise buses coming off both berths come through there. And we're redoing the roadway and it just seemed like a good opportunity if we wanted to take the chance and do something decorative for downtown. If we wanted to and if we like it after this trial run, we can move forward and put it elsewhere in downtown.
Javali?
Would it also be somewhat easier to see that as crosswalks? Could it be like even reflective?
You cannot legally, we cannot have the decoration in the middle of the crosswalk be retro reflective. The twelve inch white stripes that would surround the outside, those have to be retro reflective. It is visually distinguishable, you know, more so than a regular crosswalk, I would say.
Any other questions for Kara?
Yeah. The twelve inch stuff on a wet day is real slippery.
Yeah.
After it wears a little bit. What's this rope type stuff? Is it going to add to potential for slip, drift and falls? You know, I mean, I haven't seen any of it in wet applications.
It's recessed a quarter inch. Actually, I think it's an eighth inch below the finished surface of the asphalt. So your foot, your shoe should never actually touch the product itself. So then you're just walking on asphalt that has additional grooves in it. It's ADA compliant.
And then that location also, you know, it's also, you know, bumpy down there. Are we just going to get those bumps again as time goes? And how's this going to fare?
Well, eventually, the road is going to continue to settle and move. The organic composite that's below the road is going to decay. We are putting in an improved road base with a geofabric. So we won't, I really don't think that we're going to see the sharpness of the bumps that we have currently in the future. It's going to settle. There's no doubt about that. It'll be a more gradual settling. I would like to think that the road is going to outlast the decorative crosswalks.
Okay. All right. Javali, Dick, Bob?
I'm just wondering if with the decor, being decorative, if it has any potential for being more visual to the drivers for seeing pedestrians? If there's any proof of it being actual, a benefit in that asphalt?
Yeah, they call it a traffic scape and that's a decoration that's within the corridor of the drivers. And some people refer to it as traffic calming. So it is more visual, the walk itself, you know, I can't say that they're going to see the people within the walk, but in theory, they'll, it'll, they'll be more alert to the crosswalk.
Dick?
Yeah, two questions. Kara, one, you've got an X in there going from corner to corner. I don't notice too many people really cutting that away. Do we want to encourage them to cut the corners, cut between corners? So I guess I'm questioning why put an X in the middle of intersection?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the photo that's titled Durotherm Rope Design Installed?
Yes.
Okay. That's just an example of how it was installed in another town. We would not put the X in the middle.
Okay.
Through the street. Just above that, it shows the layout that I proposed, which is a more normal corner to corner crosswalk layout.
Okay. Then the other question is, I gather from the cover memo that if we were to decide to do this in the future, there's three hundred thousand dollars we may or may not get from DOT to continue the project?
We're going to get that from DOT. It's meant for pedestrian, pedestrian improvements. So we would have to apply, DOT has to approve, you know, whatever designs I send to them. And so whether or not they would approve the use of these crosswalks, I can't say for sure.
All right. Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah. I think it looks neat, but I'd rather put ten thousand dollars into more sidewalk and more asphalt. And so I'm not going to support it myself. I think that if we're going to spend ten thousand dollars, it should be on infrastructure.
I think Bob hit it on that. I really like it and everything, but I just don't think it's the time. It's a great idea. All right. Anybody else? Thank you, Kara. And Kara? I know you called me, I've been busy, so I'll get ahold of you the first next week. We'll go look at that whole.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lou?
Yes.
Another question. I noticed when I see that intersection today, that the work has started on something.
I do not know.
She's like, what?
Kara? The intersection is tore up.
If you could explain Spruce Mill Way and where we are on that, please.
Okay. We are in phase two of a six-phase reconstruction of that intersection. And so right now, we are putting in ADA compliant ramps, pedestrian ramps. Previously, we dug the holes that you saw in the asphalt. Now it's to extract the structures that were under the asphalt poking up, if you will. So we removed those. Now we're putting in ADA ramps. And then we'll excavate, put in an improved road base with a GeoGrid and then final pavement and then crosswalk striping.
Were those ramps off that, those four corners already ADA?
They attempted to be ADA. The law itself is quite complex and what we're putting in now is truly ADA compliant.
Sorry.
Thanks, Kara.
They get too detailed.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Zingy?
No.
Seaberton?
No.
Harris?
No.
Gage?
No.
Kuss?
Yes.
Okay, that fails four to one. And that brings us to item, Ketchikan Public Utilities Item B one, Order Contract sixteen oh three Transmission and Distribution Line Maintenance, Chatham Electric. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, number, how about number twelve?
Man, I am just off on it. I wrote that fail.
We didn't mind one.
Well, I did it in another, another one. Yeah, we're on the twelve. So we're on eight, twelve, Front Street, Mill Street, Stemming Street, Water and Wastewater Utility Replacement. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council, direct staff to take such measures as may be required to move forward with the replacement of the wastewater and water utilities within the project limits of the Department of Transportation Public Facilities pending reconstruction of Tongus Avenue from Grant Street to Dearmont Street as detailed in the City Manager Report dated March tenth, two sixteen.
Rooted in second. Bob?
Yeah. I don't know how we're going to pay for it. I know that we have some grant funds that we were planning to use in residential neighborhood. I guess we could redirect those. Is that correct, Bob? It's about five million. We can't? You don't think so? Because they were applied for, for those particular projects?
The project.
You should, go ahead.
The projects are completed if the grants were intended for. My understanding is they're now subject to reappropriation by the state legislature. And there's not much we can do about it.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm concerned about our bonding and continuing to bond. I understand that this infrastructure is important if we're going to pave over it and we want to make sure that we're not in there digging up holes and brand new asphalt. But again, the cost estimate was what, twelve million? Is that what we're thinking?
One point two.
The two projects we have going on on this one right now?
There's two parts to it, right?
Two, two parts. One is one point two million and one is one point four million. We, staff went through to identify the areas that were of critical need to be replaced, both for water, for water and for sewer force main. So what this particular project would be, to look through it, it identifies two, two specific areas.
This doesn't fix everything.
No, this is not fixing.
This is patching what we know is bad?
This is patching, it's replacing what we know is bad. And so like I said, the total for the two projects, the, to replace the water is estimated at one point four and for the sewer is one point two. So it's not full-blown replacement tunnel attack service.
Well, my only problem is that, now, you know, here we're talking about having to raise water and wastewater to two point nine or two point eight. Now, we're not, we don't have anything else scheduled for water or wastewater rate increases for next budget cycle?
We do not at this point.
Okay. I just hate to raise those again. Is there a way we can take, I mean, what if we, Bob, what if we took a million out of our, one of our other funds, that economic development or whatever, whatever, to help offset that? What kind of reduction could we do?
If you're thinking of doing that in lieu of a rate increase, I'm not quite sure how that would be totally accomplished because keep in mind, you would still have to pay the money back. The money that we're proposing to borrow for this bond issue is through the ADEC low interest.
What if we didn't use as much of the bond and use some of the community facilities development? Which almost, we have three million almost.
Right, but soon the agenda of the council would be to repay those funds. Is that correct?
I don't know. They've been sitting there for long enough. I don't know if we want to or not. It depends on what kind of money. How much is KPU still owe us?
Well, the original plan was a five-year payback, but the council changed it to a twelve-year payback.
Yep, I understand that.
And I think you, we've made the first four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar payment. So we have eleven more to go.
So what's that total?
I think we, I think it's about three point seven of the four million dollars we still owed.
And, you know, that drops into either our Economic Development Fund or drops into our Community Facilities Development Fund or drops into our, I know there's one more fund, Major Capital Improvements, which is down to four thousand. But I mean, we have some money there to play with to help off, you know, I'm looking to offset rate increases instead of, you know, but I want to get these projects done. So I'd like, I mean, you know, a two point eight and those things, you know, we use that money out of those funds to, for the KPU project. I know they're there for reserves and whatever, but this might be a good time to help offset this. So we're not raising, I'd hate, I just don't want to hit that water rate again.
One comment I would like to make is when the council established the Community Facility Development Fund, that was intended to be used for the library, the fire station and the museum. We've already completed the fire station and the library project. We still have the museum project underway. And I'm not really sure if we really know what the total cost of that rehabilitation is going to be.
I know, but there's still, those are about the only three funds that council can, you know, council made them. And, you know, we can do what we want with them. And I'm not arguing with you or anything else. I'm just looking for other ways to.
Absolutely, it's up to the council.
Talk to, you know, and maybe we can use one point, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get back. Hold on, hold on. You know, we're looking at, are we looking for one point two for the, for the water project? There's one point two and one point four. Which one's which?
Uh, one second here.
Will they combine?
One point four and one point two?
Yeah.
Two point six million.
Yeah. Which, how much is, of that goes to the water side of it?
One point two.
One point two?
One point, one point two goes to the wastewater, Your Honor.
And one point four to the water.
One point four is to water.
Because I would have a problem using some of that money for the one point four so we don't have to raise that water rate again. And then use the one point two of the bonds for, and utilize the wastewater. I'm just throwing that out there for council members to think about. That money's sitting there. Dick?
Yeah, I guess two questions or a question and comment. Are we okay if we take and use out of that development fund that the mayor's talking about and throw it into water, which is in the KPU site? Is that crossing any boundaries? Are you talking in terms of the charter of the code, whether or not the fund can be used for that purpose? I don't believe there's any restriction that would allow, that would prevent us from using general government monies and putting those into KPU, to that's my knowledge. I think there is a problem if you go any other way from KPU into general government. Okay. Because otherwise, I was going to say do the sewer with part of it. I don't disagree and leave the water alone, but yeah. Something's got to give.
Dick, Bob?
Yeah, Bob, do you have the number? What is the, the debt service to be paid on that? And what does the two point nine percent and the two point eight percent raises represent?
I'm afraid you're going to ask me that.
You can get back to us.
I'm going to say roughly, I think the number was around a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
A year?
Can't be that much. Maybe eighty, maybe eighty, ninety thousand. Or the combined? No, each one. So the total would be roughly a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty thousand.
A year?
What about the customer?
How much is that going to be? What's our bond payment going to be on that?
I think each one would be roughly between eighty and ninety thousand dollars a piece, roughly. Again, I, I don't have a number on top of my head. Well, you found it. Thank you. I wasn't too far off. On the one point two million dollar bond issue, it would be eighty-seven thousand, four hundred. hundred. And on the one point four million, it would be eighty-one thousand six hundred. And then after assume the interest rate of one point five percent, which is what the low-interest loan program is currently offering.
And we're saying that we'd have to raise the rates, now, are those, we could utilize, what do you call it, you know, we're gonna pay off a bond here pretty quick and how much should we pay a year on that bond?
Which one?
The one that goes in two thousand seventeen.
You're talking about the KPU bond that we're currently proposing to refund?
Yeah, but it's still gonna pay off at the same time, correct?
Right, pretty much, we'll save about twenty-one thousand, but that'll be paid off at the end of two thousand, sooner two thousand seventeen.
And how much do we save then on that? What's our payment?
Uh, one point three million.
One point three. I mean, I don't, I don't mind going ahead and using this, these bond funds, but I don't know, maybe not earmark it as rate increases and we can, you know, absorb it in the budget. Is that, or do we have to direct it out of wastewater and water because those are where they're utilized?
The council certainly can decide how it wants to do that, but wastewater and KPU are both enterprise funds and the intent behind the enterprise fund is to make sure that the, the years should pay for the operations and, and capital spending. The rates aren't high enough, what you're really doing is you're not fully funding the resources necessary to do the operation and to make your investment in capital infrastructure.
I know, I'm just trying to think of new ways to do things because of, I just hate to hit, you know, we've hit the water, you know, for three years in a row and I've been telling everybody, this is the last one and now we're doing this and saying, we're gonna, I need to raise it again, so I'd rather come up with another way of funding it. Like I said, we have money in reserve and we have money coming from that, when that other bond pays off, so, and I know there's plenty of things we could use of that one point three million for in the future, but.
One, one thing I would add is, and I don't know what, how much is still owing, but the Community Facility Development Fund did loan some money for KPU, that's part of the four million dollar interfund loan and are currently repaying that loan. But I'm not exactly sure how much is left in, in the reserve for that fund, I'd have to go back and look at that.
Which fund, city fund?
The Community Facility Development Fund. What happened is when we loaned KPU, the four million dollars that came from the Ford Enterprise Fund, the Self-Insurance Fund and the Community Facility Development Fund. And we delayed repaying those funds until last year when we made the first payment. The original plan was to repay that loan in a five-year period, the council extended it to twelve years. So it's gonna take a little bit more time to pay off the loan that we've already made from the Community Facility Development Fund, and I believe the amount that we loaned was about seven hundred thousand, so.
But right now we have two point eight in there, the Community Facilities Development Fund.
Right, okay.
All right, well, those are my ideas for different, I mean, I'd like to do the projects, but I would like to pay for them a, a different way other than just raising the rates. Anybody else, Dick?
Yeah, I think we'd be remiss not to do the project, I, I think we could be more creative about how we pay for it. Whether we even have to dig into it at this point, well, I guess if we have to, cause I was gonna say, budget time comes up, we should figure out whether we need rate increases or not. So I guess you're gonna have to have a bond committed to deal with it, so we do need to do it, but I, I think we've got this project from thirteen million dollars down to two point six, which hopefully gets us through in the long run, and I think that it's a smart way to do business, so we just have to do it. And which way we fund it, I can go in which way.
Judy and then Bob.
Can we commit to doing the project and then come back, get some additional information and try different ways on how we can fund it?
I would say so, but.
I think we could.
I'll take you.
Yeah, maybe we can look at that and see.
Bob? Yeah, that's kinda what I was gonna follow up, we, we passed a motion here that said direct staff to take such measures as may be required and we're now talking about the funding to, to meet those requirements. So I think that if we can start looking at maybe a creative way to do that, and as Lou says, not necessarily put all the burden on rates, I think that would be certainly beneficial. We have to remember too, that when we're talking about rates, we're considering going to a metered rate system. And I don't know where that's gonna put us in the water division's revenues, so that, that may change something there and, and I think we need to try to calculate that in also. Dick?
Yeah, it sounds like we're ready to go, say, let's do the job, we'll figure the cost out, or the money, but my other one is, I assume, it must maybe an extreme, that we're gonna do this with a contract? Contractors?
Yes.
Okay, then my other question, in order to get this done so that it's ready for DOT to do their thing the following year, we're gonna be operating on it this summer. And I'm worried about traffic flow.
Yes, so we're figuring that we would have to fast-track the design, so you could expect that we would be coming back with a contract from a design engineer for the force main, for the slip lining of the force main. We're expecting that we're going to do the water main in-house, so that design will be done by the engineering division in order to control the schedule a little bit better. And then we'll put each of those two items out for bid by contractors. I would anticipate possibly the water main could be done late this year, September, October, but more likely March. So we're thinking that the water main construction, which is traditional open trench construction, would be about five weeks of work, it's only eight hundred feet, it's eight-inch main, you know, high-density polyethylene pipe, so it's not a big complicated installation, not a lot of services, only three hydrants, so that's not a lot of work. The force main slip lining, that's less invasive, although it, it covers more area. So we're about twelve hundred feet, we have maybe six or eight test pits, like test pit looking things, so it's not all open trench, but that project does take longer. It's also, you know, both will take a little while to get permitted, so it's very possible they wouldn't be able to start, or they would be in construction this time next year and, and still beat the state.
Okay, so when was the state gonna start?
Twenty seventeen, April, May, so hopefully they, they get geared up in April, don't start in earnest till May.
And will we do ours right before that?
Will be doing ours right before, yep, yes, sir.
Bob? Mark, we're also gonna be held responsible for all the iron in the road, is that correct?
Yeah, so most likely we will be replacing panel frames and covers and valve, water valve boxes, yes.
Through the mayor, do you, do you know if the, if we're gonna change, do we have to change the water valve boxes all the way to the mains, or are we just doing risers on top?
I think we're going all the way to the main, but, yeah.
Are we gonna be using something than what we're using today?
What's that?
Are we gonna be using something different than what we're using today?
Different than what's in the ground today in that location?
Yeah, I, I know we've been talking about water valves and Dave, you may, and talk to us a little bit about it. I've watched these projects and when they pay and we buy them with a screw, we have to specially order them and then they cut the screw off to make them work, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
David Johnson, KPU Water Department. There's only gonna be one service that's small and that area is good to mention. Since it is a two-inch valve, we will not be using a service box, we'll be using a main valve box. Service boxes bottom out or anything that's larger than one inch, so it'll be the slip type of box, the bigger boxes, and that's all they're gonna be using through that section 'cause that's all that's there. Like was said before, there's not very many services, mainly sprinkler ones, because all those are businesses. And then usually inside the, the business is where they come off of their puddle of water through the building, so there are just no small services in that section.
Okay, I was just concerned because I know that we've had discussions about the boxes and part of our paving projects, the cost of putting service boxes in.
Right, what, what we have found, for more information for you, is they do make taller bottom sections, and the reason why we don't like to screw them together is because now it's a solid piece of metal going all the way down to our valve box. And if you have heavy loads of traffic and a lot of our roads around here settle over time, well, that will be a stiff piece of metal that's pushing down and could break the service off at the main. So that's why we cut the threads off, so if it does start to come down, we're hoping it slides, that's why we also respect having grease where the two pieces of metal slide together, to try to give some give when it slides, so that's the whole reason why we try to cut the threads off. But we just, here within probably the last year or two, found out they made longer ones, so we have more depth of trying to cut them and make them work.
Are these the standard and integers here, or we have any specially made?
We are having this style specially made far as the lid goes. They do make this form of box that screw together all over the place, it's just we like the older style of lids, which they switched to a different style of lid. The newer style lids are really thin and they break very easily, so we still like the thicker ones that last longer in heavy traffic.
I, I think that we just need to continue to look at that, 'cause I know that labor, it's labor-intensive to put those valve boxes in, there must be a better mousetrap out there.
And I, I agree with that with the shorter boxes, because then they have to stack them, they have to figure out how to get them stacked properly, because then the measurements not quite add up right, but since we did find out that they need longer bottom sections, that pretty much goes away now that, that I can see, because now you could cut it to five foot instead of doing four foot or lower, you could actually order a longer box.
But we still have them especially order these because they don't.
Top sections.
Just the top?
Top sections, like I said, the bottom sections are all pretty much a standard thing that they make a whole bunch of places, it's just that top section with that lid is the only really thing that we order now.
Thank you.
All right, anything else before we call the roll? Call the roll.
Kus?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Hey, that passes five to nothing, that brings us down to KPU B1, Order of Contract, Transmission and Distribution Line Maintenance, Chatham Electric. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, your honor.
Go ahead.
Uh, I move the city council accept the bid of Chatham Electric in the amount of fifty-six thousand eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents per week plus five thousand dollars for mobilization, demobilization for contract number sixteen dash three, Transmission and Distribution Line Maintenance, approved funding in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and forty thousand dollars respectively from the Electrical Division's two thousand sixteen Transmission and Distribution Maintenance capital account and from the Telecommunications Division's two thousand sixteen Infrastructure Maintenance and Services account, account number six forty-five dash oh eight and direct to manager to execute contracts on behalf of city council.
Move it in second, Dick, you have anything to say?
That's too long.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Gage?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Hey, that passes five to nothing, that just brings us down to item B2, Resolution sixteen twenty-six twenty, proposed refinancing of general obligation, refunding bond, two thousand and five, series one, which provides funds to purchase the city municipal utility, purchase the city's municipal utility. Do we have a motion?
I move the motion.
Exactly.
Your honor, I'm with the city council, approved resolution number sixteen twenty-six twenty, approving this city's participation in a proposed financing of the Alaska Municipal Bond Bank and the General Obligation Refunded Bonds, two thousand and five, series one, which provides funds to purchase the city municipal electric revenue refunded bond, two thousand and five, under a loan agreement as amended between the city and the bond bank, authorizing the city manager and finance director to approve the revising schedule of principal and interest payments of the city's two thousand and five bond as amended in accordance with the loan agreement, if the bond bank successfully refinances the bonds and establish an effective date.
Second.
Move it in second, Bob, yes, can I ask you a question? So now this is a refinancing, now, are we refinancing a two thousand and five bond? Is that the one I'm talking about that expires?
Yes, it is, that was originally issued in nineteen ninety-seven, we refunded in two thousand and five, we're refunding it again, yep.
And then it still expires in June of two thousand seventeen?
The two thousand and five expired in December two thousand seventeen, but the refunded will expire in June of two thousand seventeen, it'll be six months earlier.
Okay, so when we refund it, it'll be six months, okay, great, thank you very much. Call the roll, please.
Harris?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
All right, we just saved twenty-one thousand. All right, that brings us down to B3, Ordinance sixteen eighteen sixteen, approving the Verizon Wireless Agent Agreement Amendment number four to LTE and Rural American Master Agreement, first reading, do we have a motion?
Your honor, I'm with the city council, approving first reading ordinance number sixteen eighteen sixteen, improvement of Verizon Wireless Agent Agreement and Amendment number four to LTE and Rural American Master Agreement, providing for the filing of a referendum petition and establish an effective date.
Second. Move it in second, you want to add anything, Bob?
No, there was, was a lay on the table that was to inform us that there was a change to page nineteen of the Verizon Agent Agreement, part of this ordinance.
Anybody else?
Your honor, there was a, a potential on that, I mean, exactly the session, do we wanna do it?
If you guys wanna do it, otherwise.
No.
I'm happy. Call the roll.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Passes five to nothing, that brings us down to number four, Budget Transfer Declaration of Public Emergency.
We did down.
So, are we done with that now, we're done with vouchers, wow. Can I bring?
While you're having fun, huh?
Boy, I must be getting old. All right, vouchers for the daily news at two thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars, do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move for approval of vouchers to Catch Gang Daily News in the amount of two thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Seconded, call the roll, please.
Kus?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes five to nothing, brings us down to managers' report, Dave, do you have things to add?
I do not, your honor.
Um, anybody have any questions on the managers' report other than that our museum director's leaving and we're sad?
Here we are again.
Well, I congratulate her husband on the promotion, but we hate to see her go.
We always wanna take the boys.
Hold her hostage.
All right, hearing that on the report, that brings us down to city clerk's file.
Nothing, your honor.
City attorney's file.
Nothing, your honor.
Mitch, thanks for all your work on that ordinance on the hocking and stuff. Um, that brings us down to future agenda items, does anybody have anything? Mayor and council comments, Dick?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, I was in, you know, a southeast conference for two days this week, and it was a pretty good conference, they talked about power and transportation and fisheries and we got into a timber discussion about the fact that the forest service told the timber industry, there's only, they're not gonna have any more timber, basically Viking Mill will be shut down in a year and a half unless something happens. And so I think there's gonna be a move afoot to try to do a couple of things to influence the federal delegation to see if they can cause them to, to do something and also to stop the transition plan, which we provided, I think, a resolution or letter on here, we know, in the past, because it's part of the culprit. So I think we can stay tuned to see what goes on there, we'll be, maybe writing another letter to see if we can get some help. The other one that I think affects us as much as anything is that we know the Green Highway Department is getting clobbered with cuts. And so there's an effort afoot to.
Department is getting clobbered with cuts, and so there's an effort afoot to look at the organization, and I'll say who manages it, and there's some things, some thoughts that, parts of it may be able to be privatized, I think the Far End Resolution Chain has two separate vessels that work out there, that might work, they're for a private entity, whether any of that would work in Southeast, they don't know, but there's a, they want to do a study, and there may need, may need to be some money requested from the governor, and if there is, they're going to probably send something to the mayor, and then we can respond by putting our two cents worth in to try to get it operating more efficiently and on a, on a long-term normalized basis, rather than up and down. It was, it was a, it was a good conference.
Thanks, Nick. Judy?
No comments here.
General Lee?
Nothing.
Bob?
Yeah, I was down at the mall the other day, and they had a job fair going on, there was quite a few participants, a lot of people in there filling out applications, the university and other training facilities were there, we had an opportunity, as with the public works director, and we walked through, and welding, truck driving, equipment operation, there was a host of different things being offered, that we have the ability to take advantage of if, if we so choose to do so, but it was optimistic, and it was nice to see everybody out there.
Thanks, Bob. KJ?
No, sir.
Let's see, I don't think I have anything other than, go ahead.
Let me, let me have, make one more comment, all the presentations at Southeast Conference probably within the week will be on their website.
No, good on you.
And I would encourage people to go look at the one that Senator McGuire had that dealt with, well, how to take care of the state budget a little bit, and to me, they keep throwing these terms around, the Constitutional Budget Reserve, and the Earnings Reserve, and it all becomes Greek as to how it was set up and what it's for, and, and she made it pretty clear what it was, and she also showed a bunch of charts on how, how I could figure out if they did say, take, use, use some of the, of those two budgets, but I'm going to take a minute, if you don't mind, the Constitutional Budget Reserve, and they call it the CBR, it takes three-quarters of a vote to get into it, and it's, was passed by us as voters. The Earnings Reserve Account, which is where our dividend comes from, was created by the legislature, and they can deal with it on a, just a majority vote, so I, and so I think that gets very confusing, I know it always did to me, because they call it CBR and EAR, and it goes on and on and on, but she helped make that clear, I think, to a lot of folks that were studying there, and so I would encourage you to take a look at it, if you get a chance, probably about a week before you get them all done.
Thanks, Nick. All right, I have nothing, so that brings us down to executive session A1, request for executive session, see you catch a can, first minute, Machini, do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm with the city council, declaring that assistance to city attorney's request dated March 4, 216, is in the best interest of the city council to discuss pending litigation in City versus Machini ETAL, and give direction to the city attorney in handling the matter in executive session in accordance with AMC 2.04.025 A1 and 3, which includes the need to discuss subject knowledge of which would have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city, and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who did second, call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, let's adjourn from this meeting, hop in the other one. Quarter, we've been in the executive session.
Dave, Dave, is there a manager like this?
We gave direction to management, there's no action at this time. The last question, does-
Move to adjourn?
Well, I got, I-
Hold on, hold on.
I'd like to have an update from manager's office in regards to where we are with the contract, I haven't heard anything, and I know people have been asking, so I, I didn't know if we were moving forward.
We have a negotiation, I think next week they can do an aesthetic negotiation. When do we negotiate again?
We have two days of mediation scheduled, the 29th and 30th of this month.
Okay, that's all I wanted, I just want to know what our dates were, where we're going.
And last but not least, can anybody do the radio tomorrow? Somebody hasn't done it in a while. Dick, Judy?
I missed a meeting, I'm being forced to, can't do it in the morning, can't do mornings.
I'll let them know we don't have anybody available unless I can get away, I don't think I can. All right?
I'd like to do, I'll go down.
Okay, thanks, Nick. All right, down, KJ.
You've been sleeping in anyway.
Thank you, everybody. Bob, I love that, that's on.